Okay, I'm gonna call the January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission Work Session to Order. Heather, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Cale?
Here.
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Boswell?
Here.
Mr. Tarley?
Am I allowed to answer?
Mr. Sokolowski?
Here.
Ms. Leibel?
Here.
Hey, thank you. Before we jump into the agenda, we have Mr. Tarley appearing electronically, and we need a motion.
Yeah, a motion to allow Mr. Tarley to attend electronically.
Second.
Mr. Cale?
Aye.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Boswell?
Aye.
Mr. Tarley?
Aye.
Mr. Sokolowski?
Aye.
Ms. Leibel?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Tarley, are you hearing us okay?
I'm hearing fine so long as you're speaking. The microphone is very clear.
Okay, we will keep that in mind. Today is our meeting, our work session, to discuss the capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty-three through twenty-seven, and we begin with staff presentation. Either member of staff, any member of staff?
I can do a brief introduction.
If you want to, that'd be fine.
So, at this point, we've held our public hearing to receive input from the public for the capital improvement plan. Nobody spoke at our meeting. Additionally, staff has not received any written comments or phone calls via email or letter regarding the capital improvement plan, so there was no additional input from the public at this time. And I think our city manager is gonna go ahead and present the plan, and then we can have some questions. And then the next step is we write a letter. Staff will draft that letter, bring it to you all at your meeting in February for approval, and we'll present it to the city manager after that.
Yeah, and that letter usually says, "This is great. We can't think of anything better."
We might go to two pages this year.
That's right, that's right. They won't fit in the budget book if you do that.
There is that.
Yeah, so, thank you, members of the commission. It's always a pleasure to come speak to you. To, before I hand out, because I did bring some handouts, although I think it's in your packet, the CIP, I just wanna set the stage, because it's really important for you to understand where we are every time when we do this in the budget process, and that is at the very beginning. A word that I like to use, I probably overuse it, is we're at the budget's infancy stage. So, we really don't know what color its eyes are gonna be, or how long its hair might be, and that's true of the CIP. You're getting a draft document. There are still things that we are working on, plan-wise, that will completely adjust some of these numbers. Even today, I came up with some ideas that I want the finance department to evaluate, so that we can better pay for some things on the operational side. So, there's still a lot of movement. But the key part of what's here is the list of projects that are on the horizon. And so, you can see that, and like I say, some of the money may move around a little bit, particularly in how we're funding this, that, or the other thing, but hopefully, the intent remains the same. So, if it's okay with Mr. Chair, I will approach and hand out these, please, if it's helpful, so we have a hard copy.
Thank you. Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Let's see, is that this? I printed it out for myself. Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, I think that a good place for us to start is to sort of revisit the budget document from last year. And so, I brought it with me, because I know the Planning Commission, unless you're really involved, don't get to see the final product. And so, I wanted, I thought it'd be important for you to see it. This is what our budget document looks like. I would, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say it's the best-looking budget document in the state. We spend a lot of time making sure that this budget document is the financial story of the city, and reads like a story. It's supposed to draw the reader in and educate them on what we're about to do and how we're gonna do it in a way that keeps them interested. And so, that's why it's arranged the way that it is. On page eight-seventy-eight of the humongous document is your letter to me outlining your priorities for the CIP in the coming year. And so, let's just talk about what you had then, and then we'll go through what's in the plan, and identify what you might like us to look at in the coming year. All right, so, we start out with Merrimack Trail sidewalks and bike lanes, and a connection from Merrimack Trail to Capital Landing Road. There's a mention of bus stop improvements, and that's not in the plan. Any type of improvement to sidewalks on Merrimack Trail is not in the plan. There is some planning for Capital Landing Road to be redesigned, and that includes completely new sidewalks and a multi-use trail there that's gone through some public process. The council has looked at it. It's now in design, so that will be a major improvement. And I think a logical next step is, maybe even at the same time, how do we connect better across the city property or the Dominion Energy right-of-way to make a stronger connection to Merrimack Trail, particularly as that redevelopment of Capital Landing Road drives redevelopment along Capital Landing Road to create uses that Merrimack Trail residents want to visit. So, that's something I think we can be cognizant of. Next is this idea of creating a vision plan with community input for the downtown civic area, and you've listed out some major projects, the Blatton Building, library, the fire department, the police station, all as good examples. And I think that, you know, this is a right conversation. The police station project has advanced quite a bit since last year in terms of what we know. Last year, we weren't sure exactly what the city council would desire to do. Now, we know that the decision is to rebuild the police station in a new location, and that location is adjacent to the municipal building, and part of our parking lot, part of that wooded area that the city owns next to it. So, that frees up this space adjacent to the Stryker Center for another use. It's very likely that that another use is a library. And in fact, that's why I was a little bit late coming over here, is I was at the library board meeting. I'm on the board there, and we were discussing their preference for where a library should be located, whether that should be in James City County or be in the city. It is a joint library system, and so that decision has to be made. And I wasn't there for the vote, but it sure looked like the recommendation was going to be that it be here at this location. And so, the next question is, what does that need to look like? What kind of services does it provide? And that will determine size and scale. The question of when do we do sort of a master plan for all those facilities, I think, is a tough one, primarily because a master plan process partly looks at location, and not so much the architecture or the design. And at this point, location questions are largely answered. The fire department is going where the fire department is now. The police station is going adjacent to the municipal building. And if a library is built, a new library is built downtown, it will be here on the City Square campus, this block that is the Stryker Center. And the decision about how it's oriented on the site is largely a function of the programming that's intended, and the service that that building would provide, and the scale and size that it has to be to do that, which, again, is a part, is a function, really, of the library board, not the city council or the Board of Supervisors. If you want to sort of liken that process to something else, it's extremely similar to how the school board, school system jointly-funded, arrives at the decision to build a new school. So, the school board, being the expert educators, decide, "We need this new thing. We need this new thing on this date, and this new thing needs to serve this purpose." And then that defines the cost, and they come to the funding partners for the funding to get that done. And that's sort of where the library board is now. I do think that the way we have handled these public facilities so far has worked really well, in terms of a model for public engagement. If you paid attention to the fire department discussion, when we were bidding the project out, we had, I think it was seven or eight proposals originally. Those seven or eight proposals all came with drawings of what it would look like and cost estimates. We put those out to the community, and the community decided which one that they liked best. And that was really in the form of a recommendation. I think we were pretty clear that ultimately, the city council had to make the decision, and that part of that decision would be based on cost, which might mean that the communities decided, "Look, doesn't get selected, but at least we had this, the community's input on what they wanted it to look like." Fortunately, the one that the community chose was actually the lowest bidder, and they got the job. And so, in this instance, the fire department's gonna look like what the community said they wanted it to, so I think that's a win. We will follow the same process for the police station in the coming year. Now that we have secured the site to make all of that work, we can issue the RFP and receive those responses. The city council will do a first review, and then it's very likely, at some point in that process, we put it out to the public again, and let them look at the drawings of what's proposed, and help us make the decision about which firm to select to build it. I think that the library project follows a similar path. I think that when we get to that stage, the community's input on what they want it to look like is probably maybe even more important than it would be on a fire station or a police station, because function is so important with those two buildings, versus a library. And then the library has the opportunity, as I've said to council, the opportunity to be a landmark building for the city and for downtown, and I'd hate to miss that opportunity if we can afford it, because the word landmark does come with a higher price tag. So, the recommendation to do a vision plan, I don't fully understand. And so, if the Planning Commission felt like they wanted to put that recommendation in your letter again, it'd be very helpful to me if you could better flesh out what the expectation is, knowing that those three buildings at least have a defined site and location, and really, what we would be talking about is form, function, and design. And a vision plan typically doesn't go that far, because we've not done the work to determine what the form and function need to be, if that makes sense. So, then, next, and stop me anytime if you have questions or comments. The next one is, we start to get to the good news. The good news is that the next project, the Strawberry Plains Road John Tyler Multi-Use Trail, is in the budget. We've applied for at least two different sources of funding, one the city applied for, and the second one, we applied jointly with the Regional Planning District and TPO for federal funds. And we don't know the disposition yet of those applications, but if you look at the CIP, you'll note that we have budgeted the funding to come, and have scheduled that work based on getting the money. At least originally, it seemed very positive that that could get funded. I think that the city's application for, I think it's called transportation alternatives funding through VDOT, is extremely likely. And so, I think at least, from that perspective, that will get funded. The downside to the transportation alternatives funding versus the federal funding application through the HRTPO is that the transportation alternatives funding comes later than the federal funding would. An advantage would be that the state funding is a little bit easier to work with in terms of the speed with which you can contract and actually do the construction, so the trade might actually be about equal. But I think the good news is that those projects are actually budgeted. Next, we have investigating a sidewalk along Millneck Road from Jamestown Road through the S curve, and I think that that's a great idea. We have not investigated it yet. I like the word used here, investigate, because a big question is how the community that lives in that neighborhood would feel about it. Initial conversations that I have had indicated that maybe not everybody would love that to happen. They're very particular about the design of Millneck as it is right now, and anytime that we talk about improvements, even ditch work can be a little challenging with the neighbors that own property adjacent to it. So, we wanna be careful about insisting that that happen if the community doesn't want it. So, I think that's a, that's a good word to use, investigate. Sidewalks and lighting improvements from College Creek Park to the Oaks on Henry, a very expensive sidewalk project. And the good news is that it is budgeted over a whole host of years, because it is such a long stretch of sidewalk to do. But I think it's a worthwhile project. I think the council would like to see that happen. I think the community has successfully advocated for it, and so the fact that it's in the budget is a good sign. We'll just have to be a little bit patient about getting it done. Lastly, the next two are sort of bigger, broader issues. The first one is making sure that we have school capacity. Obviously, that's a key component of any community. It's also very expensive, so we have spent the last two or three years talking about what the next school facility needed to be, whether it's an elementary school or a pre-K facility expansion of some kind. And that decision has been made in the last three or four months, and that is now the school board and the county Board of Supervisors are in agreement that we will be pursuing pre-K facility expansion. I'm using weird words there intentionally, because I don't think the school board has fully decided what that means. Is that an expansion of a pre-K standalone facility, or is it additions to various schools to add pre-K space? I know that the recommendation and the strong preference has been to add on to existing schools. The trouble with this project is, how much is it gonna cost? You know, we were originally talking about a school that, with the, the school system estimated the cost of between twenty-five and thirty-two million dollars for a new elementary school. I think the hope is, at least by all parties involved, that a pre-K expansion would be less expensive than that, and provide us additional time before we had to do the elementary school, that I think everybody agrees is eventual. I mean, doing this pre-K expansion doesn't solve that problem of capacity in the elementary schools. So, it's really important that we try to get the budget correct. So, you'll notice in our CIP, we have actually reduced the funding amount from what we had, because we were planning on an elementary school, and now we've backed that down a little bit to reflect what we hope to be cost savings associated with a different plan. The last thing on your list is the city investing in broadband, and this is a key priority of the city council, is to find a way to provide broadband service as a utility. We have spent some time investigating the option of doing a Wi-Fi-based broadband system to cover the whole city. Unfortunately, the infrastructure's just not there yet, and it's interesting that, you know, we are where we are right now, talking about 5G service and its possible interruption of flight paths, and so maybe it's not a bad thing that we didn't jump headlong into that. I'm glad that we tested the infrastructure to learn that it really wasn't quite there yet. So, we've scaled back. The good news is that since this conversation last year, a new provider of broadband service has stepped into the community, and has a plan to provide service by twenty-twenty-four, I think it is, which will open a whole new door of avenues for contracting for broadband as a utility. And so, we plan to explore that more fully in the coming year, with the potential of issuing an RFP for a provider to do just that. And what that will do for us is tell us how expensive such a proposition might be, and identify whether or not it's really something that the city can afford to do. So, that covers your list of projects from last year's letter, and as you, as you can see, the letter is actually included in the budget document. I think that's important. And now, if you want, we can walk through some of the projects that I had highlighted to talk about.
James, this is John. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, one, Andrew, on the, the creating a vision plan, it's a year ago, so, I don't know exactly. I believe we took that directly from the GIO regarding City Square redevelopment. It says on the GIO, "Continue to plan and implement efforts for the redevelopment of City Square, which will include a new police station, library project, Blatton Building, and a plan for the Triangle Building property." So, I think we had a discussion on that, and that's what led to the verbiage in the letter.
Okay. Well, that's very helpful, then, because, you know, the word "vision plan" to a planner means a document of some kind being produced, versus advancing those projects forward. So, I would just, I would encourage the commission to have that discussion again, and define what it is you're really looking for. If it's not a document that is a vision plan, then let's talk about what it is you want us to accomplish.
That makes sense. So, the second comment was the Merrimack Trail sidewalks, and I'm a little troubled about that one, that there was no consideration. I can't say that, you didn't say there wasn't any consideration, put it in the budget. But for an area that has an old infrastructure as it relates to sidewalks and lighting, that seems to, and a lot of bus stops along that area, so there are people who walk, you know, and need to walk, plus places to walk to, I'm wondering why that one didn't make the cut.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I can't say that, you know, we gave it, I can't say there was a project on the table, and we decided not to fund it. I think in conversations about Merrimack Trail, what's realized is, there is a sidewalk there, and so when you start to compare it to other areas where there's not a sidewalk, it becomes less of a priority in the timeline. I think that, in concert with the major redevelopment of Capital Landing Road, and waiting to see how that design actually lands, is important before we invest money in improving the infrastructure on Merrimack Trail, which may or may not have to change based on how that whole intersection, particularly at the point where the DMV building is, actually looks in a few years.
Yeah, I can understand that, but the sidewalk is in poor condition, and where you cross the Colonial Parkway, you basically have to walk on the bridge, because there isn't a sidewalk there. So, I understand what you're saying, but I think that to say there's a sidewalk there, true statement, but the condition, you know, when there's rain, it's underwater, it's, you know, it's just something that I think should, should have a little bit more of priority in our rockability city.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a great, so, my suggestion would be include it again in your letter, and reiterate why it's important that this be a priority for the city council. And then, I would make the suggestion, too, that you take it a step further and say, recognizing that this may have to be in a later year of the plan, maybe even longer out than five, what does, what would you like the city to do to improve what's there in terms of a maintenance project? Because, you know, I'm not familiar with flooding along that piece. Of course, I don't walk it a lot, so that's a, that's probably something I need to do. And then we can look at what the cost would be to make those improvements. Likely, it would rise to the level of being in the CIP as a maintenance project, and we could probably do that a lot sooner than a completely new sidewalk along Merrimack Trail, which is gonna be as expensive or more expensive than what's proposed along South Henry Street.
Since we just dove into that a good bit, let me just also mention, this was something that Mr. Schaller had brought up, since he, at the time, lived on Merrimack Trail, and there were safety, safety implications. You remember, he got, he was rear-ended, turning into his condo building over there, and he was, he mentioned to us last year when we were talking about this, that when people are turning, other people sometimes use that sidewalk area to go around. And so, the sidewalks are actually, so it was, it's more than just convenience, it is a safety. There's safety concerns, too, and Mr. Schaller was articulating that in some detail. So, unfortunately, the, the safety piece didn't really make it into the letter last year, but it should have, and it will this year.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great, yeah, and we'll certainly give it.
Yeah, that's a good point, James, because there is no curb. It's, it's actually below road surface, the sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that that's, I think that's excellent to put in the letter, and we can look at it and try to fit it in in some fashion, if not a full redo, certainly some improvements. One of the things that we have done for the first time is, on Long Hill, we actually, the city constructed sidewalk, and we now have an employee in Public Works that has that type of expertise. And so, there is the opportunity for us to sort of fit some projects in to the schedule that we otherwise would not, because we would be trying to line up contractors and paying their fees. And by having in-house expertise, the ability to do some of that work, we can fit it in when there's opportunity. So, I think putting it in the letter is a good strategy.
So, let me ask you one more question about that. You mentioned on the Millneck, investigate the possibility. So, if we use that kind of language, is there a way that you can get, get feedback from the folks who live along Merrimack there, to the same kind of information that we got from Mr. Schaller, sort of anecdotally, to get it a little more collectively? Is there a way to, to do that, if we, if we, if we put that in? Can that happen?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I mean, that's one of the questions I was gonna ask the commission, particularly like the project along Millneck, and I wanna, one of the projects I wanna talk about is the sidewalk along Newport, as a good example of this. You know, you have a stretch of, of road, and for those of us that don't live on that road but walk it, a sidewalk would be fantastic. You know, I live on Coal Lane, and my wife constantly walks Millneck down to the pond and back. There's no sidewalk, and I feel like it's dangerous. For me, and the, and her as a user, absolutely, the city should put a sidewalk in there. But, as an adjacent landowner, I might have a completely different perspective. And so, like, on Newport, one of the issues that has slowed us down in getting that project done is the lack of consensus from the neighbors as to what they would like to have happened. Because when you put in a sidewalk, your choices are acquire property to build the sidewalk, or reduce the width of the road to put in a sidewalk. Those are the only two choices, really. And obviously, neighbors have very strong feelings about giving up land for a sidewalk. They also have very strong feelings about the road being more narrow, and not everybody agrees. So, one of the questions I was gonna ask the commission is, the project along Merrimack Trail, the project proposed for Millneck, are those the products of people coming to Planning Commission and asking for those to be done? Or are those just projects that the Planning Commission members themselves have identified as seemingly good investments?
I'll take ownership of the Millneck one, because I live on Millneck.
Okay.
And it's a safety concern for me. I'm a, I don't know, twenty-six-year resident on Millneck, and because of the S curve, we have, people will always ride a bike or walk up that, or with strollers and wagons, and it's a blind curve. And, believe it or not, they don't have enough sense sometimes to walk, so that they have an exit strategy. Sometimes they will walk on the inside of the curve, and you're coming around, and you don't see them. So, my, my mindset is, let's give them a better option, so that if I'm suddenly, or anybody's suddenly going down and sees them on the inside of that S curve, they don't have to swerve over at the last minute into what could be oncoming traffic. So, it's a pedestrian and auto thing, because you'll swerve amidst the pedestrian, but you don't know what's coming in the other section.
Right.
And going up it, if you're going up it on a bike, I won't pass it, pass the bike. He's struggling to make it up there, but I'm not gonna go into the other lane of traffic, because I have no idea what's coming. It can't be seen. So, a sidewalk along Millneck would be troubling to me, but a, a path, a bridge, something that just gets you up through the S curve, and maybe dumps into a wooded trail back in College Woods, because that's where most of them are going. They're going up that path, and then halfway up Millneck, the end of, where it's cul-de-sacs, yes, Canterbury, there is the entrance to College Woods. So, they're going up there, walking, but the rest of the road is straightaway enough, there are no blind curves. So, it's really about the cars and the pedestrians making up the S curve without any near misses.
Okay.
Actual accidents.
Okay.
And the only, you couldn't put it on the inside of the curve because of the slopes with the Hawthorns and the other house, but on, on the side of the lake, if it was, even if it's a wooden structure, that's, that's a bridge, kinda like they did out on the cap-to-cap trail, that gets people out of the road, because they're gonna come, whether it's safe or not, they're coming.
Right.
No two ways about it.
Okay.
As it relates to Merrimack Trail, I would say probably Mr. Schaller and I, and since he's not here to, to speak to it, I will. No, it wasn't anyone coming, it was just the observations. I go along that road on foot relatively frequently, it's very dark, and anything that has to do with pedestrian safety in condition of sidewalk, I mean, the Capital Landing Road sidewalk is pristine compared to what's on Merrimack Trail, and the lighting. And so, in, as, as Mr. Boswell had indicated, you know, Mr. Schaller's experiences anecdotically, still were enough for us to, you know, if, if part of being a vibrant city is its safe walkability and encouraging walkability, not just for exercise, but also getting from point A to point B safely, that was the reason behind that recommendation.
Okay, I think that, that's very helpful. I think that my suggestion would be, in your letters- In your letter this year, try to use some of that specificity, particularly on the Mill Neck project. Um, because that will help, um, you know, obviously proposing an improvement on property owned by William and Mary. That's part of College Woods is, is fairly complicated in terms of getting it approved. Um, but if it's something that we feel like we need to do, I think that's a good plan. And I agree with you, that S curve is a little scary for the pedestrian too. Um, you know, so I, I agree, that, that's a good, I think that's a good project. All right, um. Any other questions before we sort of go through the plan quickly? I gave you some highlights.
Just to add a touch to that, if I may, because we've got the, the, uh, path that's gonna go along Strawberry Plains. There will likely be increased traffic. Once they get down Strawberry Plains, they're gonna cut over to, uh, John Tyler Lane.
Yeah.
And then they'll go through Mill Neck, but if they can pick up the opening of the path, um, in front of. Strawberry Banks there, cause there's an opening to the College Woods path there and go through.
Right.
Then that keeps them, uh, from cutting through the, the neighborhood and a little more off the street.
Sure.
So.
Sure. Yeah, okay, I, I think that's a good, a good recommendation, um, yeah, I don't think that, it won't solve the stroller problem. But, I mean, now I have to push one, so I can tell you that won't solve the stroller problem. Um, but I think it's a good, a good starting point to improve safety there. Okay, um, all right, so the CIP is arranged, similarly, we, we haven't made many changes in how it's structured. If you remember, we did do a couple of years of pretty substantial restructuring of how we presented the CIP. Your first page talks to you about the revenues that we're expected to receive. Including the, the primary funding source, which is the sales tax revenue that the city receives. But also a whole host of grants that are programmed in out years, some of, some of which have already been applied for and approved. And some of which are in the process of being applied for and approval status is not yet known. Um, it also includes bonding for projects. And that becomes very important as we start to talk about those major capital expenses of the library, the fire station and the police station. Um, so the first one I wanted to talk about is the College Woods Circuit Concept, um, it's on page two of six, about midway down under pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Um, the city council, as part of their GIO retreat, talked about how we've made this major investment along Monticello Avenue. With a, a very, a perfectly beautiful, uh, multi-use path that transitions from the suburban design. Of a ten-foot wide asphalt space that's lit to the urban design along Midtown Row. Um, and really I think that's a, a, a great example of how you transition the space from urban to suburban. And the city council had the idea, I think it's a great one, of creating a circuit around College Woods. Using similar design strategies. So it's right in line with what the planning commission has been recommending for years, for Strawberry Plains to be the next segment. To connect through to Jamestown Road using John Tyler, um, so that's part of the plan. We have applied for that whole segment to be transportation alternatives funding. As I said before, it's very likely it will receive that. And then on the Jamestown Road leg, that takes you on into the city, all the way to College Corner, that's part of the federal application. Um, so we're optimistic we get both, in which case, within three to five years, this circuit could be nearly completed. Only missing the piece that connects you back through the William and Mary Campus, um, which is also partially funded. Um, so it, it's a exciting project that we may have this, this great circuit around that asset. All right, so then the next one, we've talked about a little bit already, the South Henry Street Sidewalk to the Oaks, that was in your letter. It's, it is funded over a period of years, starting with some design in the coming year FY twenty-three. Um, again, expensive project, uh, with some challenges. There's a, there's a pretty significant hill to climb, there's some erosion issues on the side that is most likely to be the side with the sidewalk. Lighting is a challenge through there, um, and then there are the issues of. The side that it's easiest to put the sidewalk on is not owned by the city and is privately held. It's for sale and so future development interest, what will that do, all have to be considered. Um, so I, but I think it is progress that it's budgeted and hopefully we can see that project get started soon. Um, so under stormwater management, it's not something that we talk about a whole lot, but it is a growing need in the city. Um, there are some major projects with some pretty significant price tags. Um, and, you know, living on Mill Neck, you're probably familiar with one of them. Um, out there, the, the stormwater behind the Baptist Church, there's a significant erosion problem that needs to be addressed. Um, we were extremely fortunate, last year we applied for some funding through the federal government, the Community Assistance Program, I think is what they're calling them now. Which is just a new term for earmarks. And Congresswoman Luria was exceptionally helpful in securing the funding for that. And so we think around October timeframe, we'll see the money come in and be able to start that project. Um, so that's gonna be a significant improvement for those neighbors that have been advocating for that to change for a long, long time. Uh, similar thing on Capitol Landing Road by the beaches, there's a, a significant erosion problem from a legacy stormwater system. And so we've, we secured funding for that, at least half the money is coming from a state grant to go in there and do a pretty significant improvement. To address the erosion there on Mr. Spence's property, um, and then there's a whole host of similar projects there. Um, under facilities for parks recreation, one of the things that happened in the GIO cycle last. Was the city council really encouraged the Parks Recreation Department to think about improving the existing assets. And what types of improvements would bring traffic to those parks. So really sort of a shift in mindset of, we have these assets and our job is to maintain them. To how can we make them even more important to the community and draw more attention from the community? And so the, the Parks Recreation Department has really taken that charge at its head. And done an analysis of some new uses and things that can be done in all of the parks. And, um, you can see that here in their request for funding in the CIP. Uh, for some really new and exciting types of uses at all of those parks.
Yeah, on that note, I kinda had a, um, kind of a wonderment. Um, I, as a college student, I know there are a number of students that have actually started picking up disc golf. Um, and it's been pretty popular, um, at some of the existing parks in Williamsburg. And I was just wondering if there was maybe a chance to kind of install that at some of the paths through, through these other parks. Since it seems to be somewhat of a low-cost, um, low-impact infrastructure to, to introduce those nets. But ju- just throwing that idea out there.
Yeah, so, um, thanks for bringing that up. We have not talked about adding disc golf anywhere else. Other than the course that we already have at Waller Mill.
Right.
Um, but there's plenty of space to do it in some, in some parks, not all of them.
Right, right.
Um, I think that's a, that's a good idea for us to consider in the future. Um, you know, there was a time when disc golf was really a growing sport. Don't hear a lot about it at the moment, but that doesn't mean it won't be back soon, so.
Right.
Okay, so then on the next page, page three of six, that brings us to facilities and we got sort of. This is where we have the big projects that really eat up a lot of capacity. Um, doesn't mean they're not necessary, cause certainly they are, but, uh, they are very expensive projects. So in this iteration of the CIP, we have the fire station project. Um, it's, you can see there the money that's already budgeted for it, um. And then the police station project comes next. So just a few minutes about that, you know, if, if you've been following the, the news. The city did buy a piece of property along Lafayette Street. That would accommodate the relocation of some Public Works assets that are behind the municipal building to free up the space required for the police station. That was the necessary step before we could issue a request for proposals for the police station design. And so now that we've done that, the request for proposals for the police station will actually include three separate projects to be bidded independently. So that the city council can decide which ones to proceed with and get good costing information, at least today, on what those projects will cost. So those three projects are the police station itself, which we have budgeted at two point nine. Um, and then there's about seven hundred and some thousand dollars for design there, um. We, we, you know, just speaking honestly, in today's climate, we don't know what that bid is gonna come back like. You know, if we use the fire station as a barometer, um, you know, we, we designed that project to cost around fourteen and a half million dollars. And almost immediately after issuing the contract, the contractor said. The cost of supplies, supply chain issues, the cost of labor, all have gone up exponentially. And asked us to provide an additional million-dollar contingency. And the city council decided to take that million dollars from the project budget, not add to it. And so that, the, it's making the budget very tight in terms of getting it done for the fourteen and a half. Um, so if we learn from that example, the police station costs could be a lot higher than we estimated. Um, so the twelve point nine, I really hope we, we bid this out and it comes in at twelve million dollars. Um, but I wanna be prepared for the likelihood that it doesn't. And so to that end, when you get to the CIP contingency, you'll see that there's a, a substantial amount of money parked in the CIP contingency. And the only reason that that's there is to help us deal with that possibility, if it should come. Um, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a, 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 a trick in that. If we put in the CIP nineteen million dollars for this project, the bids will come in at nineteen million dollars. And so we wanna make sure that the city has the opportunity to get the lowest possible cost. And so that's why we budgeted it the way we have. So then the other project that is included as part of this is to renovate the third floor of the municipal building. To add the additional space needed to accommodate staff. Um, our finance department is, is out of room, they have, they have people sharing offices, we've split offices to the extent that we can. Human services is really where the need is greatest, we have people with sitting in the hallway and working at home to free up space. Um, and, and what we need to do in the coming years is allow human services to expand in the first floor. Because they serve a large amount of the public at walk-up windows and, and service areas. Move finance positions upstairs and allow the city manager function, including the city attorney and the economic development offices. To go up to the third floor. When the addition was made to the municipal building, that was the vision. And it was set up to accommodate that expansion at some future date. With the renovation of that space temporarily for fire, uh, admin offices. It, it makes sense to now consider that. Um, so that will be bid as part of this project, doesn't mean that we will move ahead with it, but at least we will have an estimate of cost. And can begin to do some planning in terms of what the space would look like and what the needs might be. So that's the police station project. Um, I mentioned the Public Works part of that, um, so if you, if you're familiar with the municipal building complex. Directly behind the parking lot that's visible from Lafayette Street is the Public Works Yard. And directly behind sort of that furthest edge along Lafayette Street of the parking lot is the water tower. And the storage yard where we lay our mulch and sand and salt and that kind of thing. Um, it's also where we store surplus vehicles and vehicles that have been, that are being stored as part of a, a, a vehicle crash investigation. Um, all of that type of function needs to be relocated. In addition to that, it gives us the opportunity to consider additional shop space. Our current shop is not air-conditioned, we'd sure like to have an air-conditioned space for the staff to work in the hot summers. Um, and so this gives us the opportunity to move that stuff, free up the space on the site for the police station. And address some of those needs that have accumulated over time. Again, as I said, I think the unique thing about that RFP is that those are gonna be separately bidded projects. So that the city council and the city staff can make independent recommendations about what to proceed with and how. A new project to the CIP is a fire training tower. Um, you know, with a city our size, very often retention of firefighters and police officers is a challenge. Because we just don't offer the level of experience that a larger municipality can. Um, and so very often we find ourselves in the role of being a training ground for employees. And then when they reach a certain level of certification, they realize that there's not gonna be a lot of, um, promotional opportunities. Because people stay a long time, once they reach a certain career level with the city, um, and so they choose to move on. And there's a cost every time we lose one of those employees. We lose the knowledge, we lose the investment of, uh, the training that we've put into them. And so what can we do to provide them the opportunity to gain experience without having increased incidents? Uh, in the city. A fire training building gives us that opportunity. In addition to that, there is a regional need right now for this training to occur. We have to send people all the way to Newport News or further to do the training. And very often because of staffing constraints, we can't allow them to go that far. Because we need them here to respond when something happens. And so having a facility here in the city will really improve that, um, and give us the opportunity to retain people a little bit longer. Um, there is a grant available for this, um, and so we are applying for it and are optimistic that we'll receive it. We're excited about that facility. I wanted to talk a little bit about demolishing DMV building, um, that was, uh, on the same page, page three down at the bottom. That's a project that was in the CIP, it's a very expensive proposition. We took it out of the CIP as we became concerned with COVID revenues and constraints on the city budget. And then a few months ago, we put it back in the CIP as revenues became more certain. And so I want everybody to know that that is on the plan to proceed. Um, and so if, if people are watching out in Brandywine, I think they'll be relieved to know that that building will only be an eyesore for a little while longer. Although it has provided a lot of opportunity for fire training, if you've driven by and seen the building looking like it's on fire. Um, it's not, they're just doing some training. Uh, thank you. All right, so then, uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about public art, um, which is also in that same section of economic development. This is a new project for the city, but I think it's so important. Um, I think particularly for the planning commission, as you all talk about and think about place making, public art is a critical component of that. And it surprised me when I came to Williamsburg, almost six years ago now, that the city of Williamsburg did not have a public art program at all. Um, most localities have some form of public art program. Whether it's an official art in public places or sort of an unofficial city investment strategy. And so last year, we made the efforts with city council to prioritize that and included it in the CIP. So the function of this is sort of interesting, we budget one percent of the total value of the CIP for public art. And so every year, there, we're not adding hundreds of thousands of dollars. We might only be adding ten thousand or, or twenty-five thousand dollars to get to that one percent. And then there's a public art council evaluating and recruiting new art to the city, evaluating locations for it to go. And drawing off of this money to solicit artists to get the kind of quality art that this community expects. And so this is a, a big change for us and we're super excited to see how the Arts Council can turn this funding into new public art in new spaces. I, I think that's progressing nicely. Also on this page, I wanted to talk about redevelopment housing, um, because this is a topic that the city council and the Housing Authority Board are really. Talking a lot about lately. Um, years ago, the decision was made to merge the Housing Authority function and city government. That's a complicated proposition because there's so much federal funding and restriction associated with. Of a, a HUD-funded housing program like ours. Um, a step that was identified when that merger was, was envisioned, but has never taken place. Is separating financially from the, uh, housing and urban development of the federal government. And the reason that you would consider doing that is there's a whole host of restrictions applied to the maneuverability of the authority. By taking that funding, but of course, there's a cost to it. Um, one of the things that we have done over time, short of that separation, is begin to fund. Sort of incrementally the needs of the housing authority that the housing authority's revenue streams can't meet. And so that you see in the CIP again this year, a slight growth in the things that we're paying for. Uh, to help them accomplish renovated spaces and improved living conditions in their facilities. And again, I think this is a critical priority for the city. Um, so the conversation about separation is on the horizon. Uh, I don't know what the decision will be, there is a cost to it. And unfortunately, I don't think this is the year for us to be able to afford to do it. Uh, but it's good to have the conversation and be aware of that need or, or lack of desire moving forward. All right, so next on page four, facilities and land, as I said, renovation of the third floor of the municipal building, programmed in. Um, for us to start that work and do the design, um, as part of that bid process for the, for the police station. Um, we're not committed to doing that just yet, but it is in the plan so that we can get started. I wanted to talk about a, a piece of the CIP that we often don't spend a lot of time talking about, particularly at the planning commission level. But I think it's important for you all to understand how all of these projects fit together in terms of a budget. And so vehicle replacement plan is, is, I, I wanna point out the cost of that growing exponentially over time. And so the, the primary culprit of that are fire department apparatus, very expensive pieces of equipment. Out in twenty twenty-seven, you've, you've probably seen the fire department's tower. Out in twenty twenty seven, you've you've probably seen the fire department's tower, uh, tower ten. Um, it's the largest piece of equipment that we own. It also is the most expensive and it's due for replacement according to our plan in twenty twenty seven. Um, so that's on the horizon and a pretty extreme cost for those vehicles eating up capacity in the C I P. Not to say that that isn't a valid expense, but it is unusual to see the vehicle plan for such a small city to have such a high price tag. So I just wanted to explain that. Under facilities also down on that page is the library. Um, we've talked about that a little bit. We're sort of at a crucial moment in that project uh where the library board has to decide what they need and when they need it by so that they can advocate for that with the local governments that fund them. Um, so the city council has a piece of that. The um James City County has a piece of that and also York County is a participant in our joint library system. Um, the decision to build a library in downtown Williamsburg is a tough one um because for the county, it's a tough proposition to ask them to invest millions of dollars in a jurisdiction that's not their own. Um, for people in James City County that don't use the library, that's going to be a target for criticism for the elected officials. And so I think we just we have to be cognizant of the fact that that's not an easy decision. Despite the fact that over, I think it's over eighty percent now of the users of the library here in the city of Williamsburg are James City County residents. And you know, if you followed the history of this project along, you know that the library did a survey. The survey came back overwhelmingly advocating for this location to remain the site of the library, even to serve the county residents. And so I think it's a tough decision ahead for the county. Um, and it'll be even tougher for the county and the city to figure out what the right mix of shared funding is for that facility. Because so much of what it could be is going to be dependent upon what the the programming needs are, but also the fact that the city wants this to be a landmark building, uh, which is, I said before, it comes with a price tag. So it'll be interesting to see how that project evolves. The good news is we're starting from a position of advantage in that we've already budgeted some funding for the project. I don't know that it'll be enough um as it largely depends upon the negotiation of how much the county will pay versus how much the city will pay. Um, so we could see that number change significantly one direction or the other. So on page five, we begin to do the summary. Um, so you get here the contingency costs and also um our debt payment structure, including in that debt payment structure, as you can see, changing over time, is the concept of what we will be bonding for. Um, can't take on all these major renovation and and improvement projects without some additional debt. And debt is a tool, we shouldn't be afraid to use it. We need to be careful not to overdo it, though. It's like any credit card, you can get in over your head and we want to be careful of that. Um, so we have a debt policy now, we adopted last year, and so we want to make sure that we're consistent with that. Um, as part of the financial retreat, we will have our financial advisor there to talk about debt as a tool and how this this program of development looks from the standpoint of our credit rating and the capacity of the market to meet our need. All right, so I'm going to skip over the bottom lines at the bottom there. Um, you know, the the estimated operating fund surplus, you can see how much we're drawing down each year or putting in each year. So initially, we are pulling money out of the fund. Um, but then in the latter years of this plan, we're putting money back in. It's largely because of the projects that are front loaded in this in this plan, including things like the the police station and um fire station. So then on the next page, and this is really where it starts to get clear, are the folding in of the school projects. And I talked a lot about already the pre kindergarten school construction. Um, so that's that project that is as of yet undefined. It's programmed for twenty twenty four. There's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be done between now and then for that money to be needed in twenty twenty four. So I don't think it's unreasonable for that project to be split up and pushed out a little bit, uh, which will help the bottom lines of each of these years. Um, but if you sort of fold down to the bottom, the available for future projects is the critical line that shows you the health of the C I P over the five year span. Um, you can see that we have balanced in twenty three. We're not balanced in twenty four primarily because of that school project. And then it gets a little better as we go out into the future years. In twenty seven, we're out of balance again, largely due to the the tower uh replacement and the vehicle plan. Um, so you know, I'm not so worried about the being out of balance in twenty four. As I said, that school project is has really no definition yet. And so the cost that's programmed here is just completely uncertain. I think that that will get defined in this coming year and we'll see that number change. As I said, it's it's exceptionally unlikely that all of that money is due next year. Um, there'll be design, that'll take several months. That'll, I mean, that'll take better part of the year and then it it so that'll push construction out. Probably it's two year construction window. So that project probably gets split into three different fiscal years, which will help maneuver around that balancing issue. And then as we get closer to twenty twenty seven, the conversation about the tower also gets to be had. Um, you know, do we need an apparatus as big as the tower is? I don't know, that's a conversation for the fire department. And it's right now on a fifteen year replacement schedule. A lot of localities replace them on a twenty year replacement schedule. And so we just need to be sure we're making the right choice there. And by the time we get there, I'm sure we will have the funding figured out on on that piece. Um, so that is the capital improvement plan as is drafted right now. As I said before, we are still looking at some changes to this. Um, so that we can free up some money in the operating fund to primarily address what I think will be the biggest issue for the city council in this budget year. And that is modernizing our retention and recruitment salary scale. Um, over the years, we have drifted down on the competitive level and it's becoming evident in our recruitment processes that we're behind also in retention. And so it's time to start talking about how we can fix that. And in order to do that, we're going to have to move some money around in the operating fund so that we can increase some salaries to be competitive again. So, Mr. Chairman, that's uh that's what I have for you today. I'm happy to answer questions or help you in your thought process.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a lot of uh a lot of information, a lot of numbers, a lot more numbers than we typically uh we typically deal with. But I think when we see a two and a half million dollar fire truck on the horizon, uh, we could kind of better understand why some of the projects we've been advocating for uh or not uh are not moving forward any any faster. Um, any questions? Mr. Tarly, do you have any questions? Uh, any more questions?
No, but thank you very much. Uh, that was a a very good overview.
Anyone else uh follow up questions? We've sort of started our discussion already. Anybody have uh follow up discussion that we want to? Anything you'd like to bring up about the um capital improvement plan recommendations from last year, for example? Um, we uh we have talked about the fact that we probably want to beef up the um Merrimack Trail to uh emphasize safety. So Aaron, do you need more guidance from us on that?
I don't think so. I think what I can do is I can take um the comments from the commission and um I can get a letter drafted up and I'll email it out to everybody to to get some feedback from you guys and then we can get a final draft for you for your meeting.
Okay, we need to flush out um the uh the the vision, the vision plan. I think, as I remember, um, Mr. Granger, Mr. Tarly, you were here last year. Mr. Sokolowski, you're you were not, I think, right?
I was not.
So I think the I think the last two words, the design consistency, was sort of what we were focusing on. Um, that's uh, you know, we've got sort of a prairie style fire station coming down the pike and we don't want, you know, it 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 there needs to be a down to a a there needs to be a look that is consistent, I think. And I don't, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we were talking specifically about a document uh of a vision plan, but I think we were talking about more of a uh of a broad scope community input and 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 sort of community consensus rather rather than everybody who's interested in the fire station, come and talk about the fire station design and everybody who's interested in the police station, come and talk about the police station design and they might be completely different.
Sure.
And, you know, not in harmony. So I think it was more of a of a harmony issue, Mr. Granger.
I think it was harmony, but it was also let's make sure that we're looking at this entire block.
Yeah.
As we figure out what we want to do, as opposed to saying, oh, man, if we had thought about this, we could have made this a three story building and so I think it's the 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 block design and a little bit more of the even beyond this block. I mean, extending what we're trying to accomplish down here and making sure that we've really thought ahead for parking and and the flow so that we don't say, man, this would have been great with a a fountain in the middle of it.
Sure.
Um, so it's planning the whole little, I want to say region, but that's too big.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I think I understand. I I can work with Aaron to put some language together on on what we what what I think you all might want. And then it comes back to you and you can make sure that it it is consistent, but I think that makes a lot of sense.
One of the one of the other thoughts that did pop into my head about the uh police station um and pricing and and I didn't see you bring your crystal ball with you today. But is it possible that we're at a height of pricing right now with COVID and that if it was delayed a year, um, then we might find that the workforce has improved and the supplies and materials might bring the pricing back down? Um.
So I had that, it's it's interesting you ask that because I had that very conversation this morning with county administrators. And my question was, what do you guys think? I mean, does it make sense to delay our capital projects? Because they're in the same boat that we are, right? I mean, they have a whole host of capital projects too that they're going to bid out in the coming year. And so I said, does it make sense for us just to delay all that and and see if prices do come down? And our consensus was that's not going to happen. And so you would end up delaying to no effect. Um, it's not the, it's not, I don't think it's ever been the experience in the construction industry that once prices have gone up, they adjust down, at least not significantly. Um, so I think I I think this is the new reality for a long time, probably, um, until some other event restructures costing. Um, so I I am not going to advocate delay. Um, I think that delay could come naturally if the cost is so much that we just simply can't afford it.
Okay.
And I know that the council will look at it that way because they don't want to. I'm I'm certain that they do not want to proceed with a project. They want to proceed with these projects. And so as they make these decisions on letting a contract, they're going to be relying on the staff to say, it's okay, we can afford to do it for this much and still get your other priorities done.
Okay, is there the opportunity to uh make sure that we're we're scheduling our stuff um at a time to where we're not competing with pricing and supplies with the county? Uh, if they're doing similar projects and maybe there's some cost savings in coordination? Because if we're all trying to get the same contract to the same month, then it's going to cost more.
Absolutely, I think that's a really good suggestion.
Okay.
So you mentioned uh you mentioned Newport sidewalks. Uh, could you tell us where that is?
Yeah, so um, you know, that's a a project we have, how to say it delicately? We have tried to do this project now for a couple of times. Um, I've I've tried to advance the funding so that we could get it done because I know people want it to happen. Um, but consensus on the street is challenging because, as I said, do we take up more street to build sidewalk or do we take up private property to build sidewalk? And it has to be one or the other. And I they, you know, there is the concept of doing sort of a a shared lane um where you have some intermittent parking and then sidewalk. And so what that creates is a similar flow of traffic to what you have on Griffin, which as a city manager, as a planner, is never something I would advocate for. Um, I I don't think we want to create that kind of issue if we can avoid it. And so I think that what we've done in the plan right now is we've budgeted for that, I think, two years from now. And that's to give us enough time to work through the neighborhood concern. If we can do that sooner, I will definitely ask the city council to move that project forward uh because I really want to get that one done. Um, if if we could get consensus from the neighborhood on which plan they want in the next few months, we'll try to do it in this fiscal year.
So did did that, does that include Griffin?
It does not.
It does not because I remember the last time we talked about this a year ago or whenever it was, there was a conversation about sidewalk down Griffin because the college wanted, you know, something about people to be able to walk to the law school or something like that in that direction rather than just going down Boundary, which seems to make more sense.
You're going to have the same, the same issue on Griffin if you try to do a a new sidewalk. You're either going to lose parking or take up more private property and and it, you know, people just aren't willing to do either one. And so at some point, the 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 neighborhood has to come to consensus for us to proceed.
Yeah.
So there has been discussion about on Newport doing a simulated sidewalk with some barriers and cones so that the neighbors could get a feel for what their street would look like if we took some space. Um, we'll see if that progresses. Ultimately, we're going to get that project done as soon as we can reach some level of consensus. I don't think we'll ever get to a hundred percent, but if we can reach some level of consensus on what design is best, then we'll we'll get it done.
Yeah, that's that's what I was asking about, that that uh that simulation, the cones and all that. So I mean, that's that's a way to get people to actually visualize it. So that's still, that's coming then. Okay, good. Um, anything else um from that presentation? We've got, I'm looking at the agenda, we've got a discussion, then we've got an open forum, then we've got another discussion, so I'm going to.
Well, I have I have some input there uh on the issues that we were just talking about, if I could uh interject. So it seems to me, though, and part of our discussion probably was last year, although I don't remember specifically, but aside, and I'm all for sidewalks. I'm, you know, each of us, you know, Mr. Granger is always concerned about the trash facilities and I'm always concerned about sidewalks and pedestrian facilities. And so um the the sidewalk along Newport seems um unnecessary if we don't have one on Griffin. I mean, it's a small sliver of road there and so I recognize the challenges there because it's we we're left with what we have. It's not like the other streets, you know, up to um, what is that Boundary? Um, Newport to Boundary, you know, it's wider, you've got one for sidewalk. We've got a different challenge there, but that's just a small sliver of the road. The main part of the road is really coming down Griffin. Um, uh, so that's one thing that, you know, I I think we should consider. I'm not asking you to commit one way or the other, I know it's a challenge. But some of the other things that we've talked about in the comprehensive plan uh in 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 this regard, uh, you know, when we're talking about the circuit loop uh through Strawberry Plains and John Todd Lane to Jamestown Road was also uh taking a look at that entrance corridor uh on Jamestown Road from one ninety nine, including the sidewalks and um bicycle lanes along there. Um, you know, and the and and put that into some consideration down the road using our investigate. Uh, you know, that that road has been safe forever and it's wide, nice and wide. But from a pedestrian or bicyclist standpoint, it is not a very safe road. Uh, there isn't much of a bicycle lane there. And if you're looping that whole thing around trying to encourage that type of traffic, that would be something to but not only it's an entrance corridor, but it's also pedestrian, bikeway. Um, and uh the the other thing is we're talking about pedestrian and this is probably somewhere in the future, but you know, the our arts district, there aren't any sidewalks on those cross streets between Lafayette and Richmond Road. Uh, and that's an area that we were trying to be encouraging foot traffic, but there's no place to walk. So, you know, that's that's something for to uh to put in the the uh plans at some point as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, as I said, following the uh the agenda, uh, we have a discussion, then an open forum, then another discussion. So I'm going to just.
I just had a very quick question.
Yeah, absolutely. We're gonna we're gonna have another discussion after the open forum, so it, you know, it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I want to, I want to follow the agenda so I don't forget the open forum. So we have, we we have an open forum on the agenda, so I'm going to uh open the open the floor to anyone that wants to uh wants to come. We have a wave from the back row and seeing nobody, I'm going to close the open forum and that's just so I don't forget the open forum. And now, Mr. Sokolowski.
Thank you, perfect. Um, this is kind of a um a question about if there has been any investigation or thought to a potential right hand turn lane um being constructed at the intersection of Compton Drive and Monocello Avenue during peak traffic flows, there's typically a pretty significant backlog that I've experienced with as a student and as a longtime local resident uh with my family whenever we come through there, uh where oftentimes traffic is usually only let through by like a Good Samaritan who who just for goes is a hurt right of way um to the to the block cars. And I think a right hand turn lane would have, you know, it's a minimal construction project that I think would have a lot of benefits um on on traffic flows and even potentially pollution. I mean, the number of idling cars there is can be pretty significant. Uh, so just throwing that out there.
I think that's something that we hear a lot about. Um, the city council brings it up from time to time. I think I think the the member of the public that's here today has brought it up before. Um, and the complication there is it's a V dot section of road. And so it's not in the scope of the city's design. Um, what I would suggest you do is put it in your letter if it's something that the the whole commission feels is important, and that's that's something I want to emphasize. I know that that Aaron probably will too. As you write this letter, it needs to be majority supported by the commission. And while each of us have our own little projects, when you're writing on behalf of the commission, it needs to be the whole body. Um, but if that does reach to that level, include it in there. But if that does reach to that level, included in there as a, an item that needs attention by the city, and I think at the very least, we advocate with VDOT that they consider making that improvement, as we certainly hear a lot about it, especially now with the improvements to Monachello. I think it's somehow heightened the level of concern there. I think the bicycles making the transition and the walkers, I think, maybe has just made it harder for people to make the turn. So I think it's a good thing to look at. The other challenge is how many stoplights there are already and where they are. So I think that, I just want you to be aware, it's not as simple as it sounds.
So, so speaking of more complicated than it sounds, there was a conversation at one point about realigning Trayburn, so that Trayburn and Compton line up and, you know, move that light instead of being at the ed school there where it is.
Right.
Sort of reconfiguring that and making a light at Compton rather than the light. So, so is that, has that gone anywhere? I don't remember where that conversation was.
That hasn't necessarily advanced, and again, it's the, the issue of control of the road. I, I think that's a very good recommendation, and, and I think it's one that our public works department supports, but obviously also quite expensive, just, just considering the terrain of that realignment, and that would be a pretty expensive proposition for an intersection. Not to say it's not important, and I think it, that it's, if it's important to the commission, put it in your letter so that we can give it some attention and have some discussions with VDOT about what's possible.
One thing that, that's obviously important, I think, to all of us on the commission, is the issue of, of affordable workforce housing, and that's something that doesn't appear in our letter. And I'm wondering if it's something that we do want to sort of elevate the, the level of, of our support for that. Perhaps at the investigate stage, or if we have more concrete ideas, something to go in the letter.
Mr. Chairman, if I can jump in, because we were having a conversation about the planning commission just yesterday, I think, regarding affordable housing, and it, it, it's my fault, I think, oversight on my part. We did have an affordable housing work group go through an entire process and produce an affordable housing report, and I don't know that that was ever formally presented to the planning commission. I'd welcome the opportunity to come back and present that to you so that you could see what the recommendations that work group were and how the city council envisioned moving forward, and help, hopefully that might, can inform some of your opinions and thinking on affordable housing in the city. Because I know that, for me, being a part of and serving as staff to that committee, I was surprised, really, at some of the outcomes. So I, I think it would be a good exercise for the planning commission in a future work session, if you'll have me back, to talk about that.
Yeah, because we, we have not seen those officially. That's not been presented to us. The same thing with the neighborhood balance was not presented to us, and we got kind of caught...
Yeah, it's oversight on my part.
A little bit of surprise.
I'm sorry for that.
So, so timing-wise, though, I, we do want to, is, is there, is there a report that's available?
Uh huh.
Is it, is it online?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So if we maybe all take a look at that, if you haven't already, and let's try to put some language, I would like to put some language in our, in our letter, and we're going to try to finalize the letter before our next, our next meeting. So if we could, if we could take a look at that and see what we can, see what we can put together, you know, send suggestions to Aaron and copy all of us, maybe, and we can work something out on that, because I think that's important, that we want, if they, and if they're recommendations, we don't have to do the, we don't have to do the heavy lifting on that, which is...
The good news is the report.
Heather, would you send out the, the link for that?
I can, yes.
Aaron?
Okay.
Thank you.
I can make sure you all receive a, a copy. It'll, I'll send it out as a PDF, so the commission can have it.
Yeah, and the good news, just to relieve you, it's not 300 pages long. I think it's only 12 pages. So it's smartly designed, it's very easy to get through, I think it'll be an easy read for you.
Okay. Anything else that, that any of the commissioners would like to bring up that, that should be in the, in the letter?
Nothing new, but I would just like to reiterate from my, my previous thought, I think I heard mention of a stoplight. Personally, I feel like a stoplight there would actually cause further traffic flow problems, I think, just keeping it as a stop sign and just implementing a right turn lane, similar to what, what happens at, when Dillard meets Richmond Road. I think that would just be beneficial in and of itself, just having access to get some cars going.
So you're not talking about a light there, you're talking about just a...
Just a right-hand turn.
Yeah, because right now, somebody turning left blocks everybody that wants to turn right.
Blocks everybody back, yeah.
And, yeah, you're driving through the dirt if you're trying to go around them.
Exactly.
That would certainly be...
I mean, from one perspective, that would be a lot easier to accomplish. I think it's, it's still a little challenging, because you've got a, a steep bank on the left.
Right.
You've got a bridge on the right, so, but I think that's easier to do than realigning those roadways, for sure.
Exactly.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah, I just, back to the comment that Mr. Granger made regarding the vision for the downtown area, I do think a little bit, we probably need to get community input earlier rather than later as we begin to lay out the area, because, as you pointed out, if we have some people who weigh in on the fire station, and it's completely different than the group of people who weigh in on what the police station is going to look like, we already, I remember years ago when people were up in arms about the, the Striker Building, and it's not like the fire station, although the fire station melds well with the municipal building. I just think we need to be cognizant of that, so we don't end up with a different architectural style associated with the police station and any other activity that goes on in this downtown square area.
Is that, is that clear enough to sort of, we'll take, we'll take vision, we'll take vision plan out since that sent red flags up for the, for staff and...
I think so. I think that maybe the emphasis might need to be played, might need to be put more on what we were just talking about with, with public art and placemaking and them, and recognizing that when, when the public enters this space, they, they recognize that it is a municipal area and that there are, there are facilities in that area that represent that, and they don't all need to be clones of each other, but they need to speak to each other, and there needs to be some cohesiveness amongst the buildings. And that may not necessarily be done with architecture, it may be done with sidewalks and park spaces and that kind of connectivity, or something along those lines. And I think it'll prob, I think maybe we need to focus more on the design aesthetic other than the visioning of the space.
Do you have enough then to...
I think so, yeah. I think I can, I think I can put that together.
Do you need anything else from any of us on that? Was, were we...
I don't think so. I think what I'll do today, when, when I get back in the office, I will kind of type up the highlights, and I'll send them all out just to make sure I haven't missed anything. And then I can get, get crafting that letter, and I'll, I'll work with the city manager to make sure we get the, the language in there that we need.
Okay. Any last words, Mr. Tarly?[1768.01]